All right, good evening. We're opening the December 16th, 2014 Planning Board Meeting. It's being recorded by our Director, Robin McDonald, and by Yuck Cat for the folks at home. Is there anybody else recording it? All right, that being done, we're gonna jump in with our first order of business, which is a request for signage, Taylor Rental, 200 Shaker Road.
Business name's Taylor Rental. Business owner's address is, uh, 278 Summers Road. Property's, uh, address is 200 Shaker Road.
It's the six o'clock right now.
Today's song.
It is single face. It is not attached to... It is attached to the building.
Sorry. It's six o'clock right now.
Pretty much it.
Mm-hmm.
I hear from...
You approved the waiver of site plan for that new...
Yeah.
Location a couple of weeks ago. Actually, a month ago, I think it was.
Yeah. Just asking for the one sign. There's no poll sign?
Yes.
Okay.
Nope, we're gonna come back for the poll.
Okay.
Were the traffic signs too?
Pardon?
Were the traffic signs in a waiver? I don't remember.
In the waiver, there were.
Okay.
Yeah.
All right, do you mean we have any, uh...
Looks pretty good to me. It looks like it...
Make a motion to approve?
I'll second that motion.
Looks fine to me.
I've been in the...
I think it's approved. Tom drove seconded it.
Any more discussion?
No.
All those in favor?
Aye.
All right.
Please go, Ted.
Can you say yes, no?
We're gonna start our, uh... Yeah, I said yes.
Okay.
Yes, 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 yes.
All right.
Yes. Our six o'clock meeting. We're gonna get your darling and Nadeem Kasu.
Yes.
Yes.
Kasu? That was close.
Close enough.
Okay, how are you?
Good.
All right, so tell us what you'd like to do.
Well, we're looking for extension of hours as of right now.
Uh, could you name and address for the record, please?
Nadeem Kasu.
Okay.
Right now, what we do have for hours, we have Monday through Thursday from 11 till 10, and Friday, Saturday from 11 to 11.
Okay.
What we'd like to request is an increased one hour, uh, which will change the hours Monday through Thursday till 11:00 PM. Friday, Saturday, and Sunday, which we use the clause, "I'd like to open back on," and it'll be from 11 to 11.
Okay.
So we're not asking for the what?
If I could just...
Did you want an increase on Fri... On Saturday?
Friday and Sa...
Friday, Saturday.
Till 12. Till 12.
12.
All right, Robin?
If I could just interject.
Certainly.
What they are looking for are temporary hours.
Okay. For the holiday season.
Yes. They have filed an application for a special permit to amend the hours, um, which is going to be heard in January.
Okay.
Right now, what they're looking for is to increase the hours for the Christmas season.
Right.
For... And then to operate four Sundays from now until their special permit will be heard.
Okay.
So it's only temporary. That's why it's not a public hearing. Um, and the fact of the matter is, this restaurant is set within a building. It's not a separate building. There's no residents around.
Yeah.
And basically, that's just what it is. It's just a temporary...
Sunday hours are from what to what?
11 to 11.
And so, I mean, that fits within what we've done for all the restaurants and/or bars?
Absolutely.
Yeah.
No bars.
The special permit?
We don't allow bars.
We don't allow bars.
I'm sorry. Let me rephrase that.
There was one other addition as well. If the holiday fell in a weekday...
That's what you were going to look for when you do your amendment.
Okay.
Um, but you need to mention that tonight for what you are looking for for your temporary hours, and think about it, for Christmas Eve and New Year's Eve. So you need to ask the board...
Christmas Eve, we have no plans of opening late because it's a major holiday. We wanna be with our families. However, Rich would like to open a little later on New Year's Eve, maybe 1:00 AM, just for that day.
Right.
We request, you know, because people are gonna celebrate from midnight and, you know, hopefully they'll be done and over, maybe by 1:00, so...
Okay, again, I think that falls in line with what we typically do for everybody else. So the special permit is in January 13th? All right, which I'm assuming is just more clerical than anything else? There's no...
It basically is, um, and like I said, you know, it's all self-contained into a... In a separate building where the business isn't affecting anybody else around.
I personally don't have an issue, but I certainly would like to hear from everybody else.
I don't have any issue with it. The rest of the businesses in the building are closed at those hours.
That is correct.
So there's no conflict with other businesses.
Okay. Ralph?
No, I don't have a problem with it. It's on a temporary basis until the actual amendment comes through, which no problem whatsoever with me.
Son?
Same.
Todd?
Ditto.
Okay.
Okay, so it's, uh, four Sundays.
11 to 11.
11 to 11. And then...
Monday through Thursday.
Monday through Thursday.
11 to 11.
Extended hours, Christmas Eve and New Year's Eve.
11 to 11.
On Friday, Saturday, 11.
When will you actually be opening again?
We are open right now.
You are open? Okay. I didn't realize that. Okay.
But we're running a different menu, different than...
Okay, Monday through Thursday, 11 compared to 10.
Somehow I missed the opening.
And then Friday and Saturday, what?
Somehow I missed that we're open again.
Well, we had, uh, we had to go for a couple of meetings with the 11.
Oh, okay. Yeah.
Friday and Saturday, 11...
12.
To 12?
Yeah, till 12.
And four Sundays, 11 to 11. And then New Year's Eve... Till 1:00.
Yes, sir.
Okay, just so I haven't...
So I have a motion to approve temporary hours.
Some vote?
Second.
Any more discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Gentlemen are all set. Thank you very much. Good luck.
Good luck, guys.
All right, so now we've got a request for waiver of site plan review. Waisaki Law Firm, 292 Hamden Road.
Uh, oh, boy. Hendrick Wes...
Waisaki.
Waisaki Trustee, 288 Hamden Road, East Long Meadow, Mass. Phone numbers are listed here. Name of proposed business, Waisaki Law Firm.
Bozina.
Thank you very much. Owner of business is Bozina Waisaki, 292 Hamden Road, East Long Meadow. Property address is also 292 East Long Meadow. Uh, prop... Property district is A. Allowed use is yes. Proposed hours of operation are nine to five. Number of employees, including owner, is one. Date of last parking plan with copy is none. Summary of business operation, the proposed... The purpose of the business is to have an office of the law firm in the house, home office. Phone use, computer use, no clients coming to the home. And the application's been signed and dated November 22nd, 2014.
So basically, home office, computer?
Home office.
Any discussion? I have a motion to approve. I'm sorry.
I just wanted to interject that I have no problems with someone operating out of their house as a home office. I just wanted it clarified that this doesn't fall under a professional office, because that, under professional office, says including but not limited to doctors, architects, and lawyers, which wouldn't be allowed in the residential district. So if she's doing law work, um, as long as it's not her full professional office and it's only a home office and she's just doing legal papers and all on the computer, I don't have a problem at all.
And that people are not coming to the home for meetings?
I think that's the main... I don't say anything.
That's the intent of the bylaw.
That's the intent of the bylaw, exactly. And like I said, I just... I didn't want us opening up a door where someone hears it and then says, "Well, wait a minute. You allowed a lawyer's office in a residential district. What we're approving is a home office where they do some legal work."
And that's what I've done in the decision.
All right, I think it's good to have that established.
You can sign that.
Okay. All right, Robin actually has that in the decision, so...
Yep.
Okay.
I would make a motion to approve the home office for Waisaki Law Firm, 292 Hamden Road.
I'll second that.
All right. All those in favor?
Aye.
Most are passing. That's one of the stipulations that we talked about here on here. And we have requests for a waiver of site plan, Wetland Consultants, 25, Granby Street.
Uh, property owner is Peter Lesc... That's a French word.
Levesque.
Levesque, thank you. Uh, owner's address is 123 Orchard Road, East Long Meadow. Phone numbers are listed here. Uh, name of proposed business is Wetland Consultants, Inc., Peter Levesque, 123 Orchard Road, East Long Meadow. Property address is 25 Granby Street, East Long Meadow. Property district is business. Allowed use is yes. Hours of operation are eight to five. Number of employees, including owner, is one. Date of last parking plan is not applicable. Summary of business is Wetland Consulting. The application has been signed and dated December 15th, 2014.
And this is, um... Pete Leveque is just changing. He sold off the environmental areas, hazardous waste and all that, and he's just keeping it as Wetland Consultants. He's been there forever. However, um, he was before the bylaw required the, um, site plan, so... Or the waiver of site plan.
And he's got plenty of parking for this...
Yes, he does.
I know him. I know the office. It's been there for a while.
I give him a lot of credit for coming forward for...
Doing the right thing.
Doing the right thing.
He's a pretty good guy.
Yeah. He does a lot of business with the town, too.
He does. He's a good guy. He's a real good guy. Michael.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Make a motion to approve?
Second that motion.
All those in favor?
Aye.
We're flying tonight.
Here we are.
I guess there's a Christmas party.
Um, yes. All right. Um, the next is the release from subdivision. Bond, partial release for Chaplain and Sons. They are looking to release $130,336.80. And I have DPW's breakdown. Right here? Pondview, I'm sorry.
It's more DPW than it is us, as long as, you know, they sign off and they're... And they're agreed to it.
And this is the back end of Bluebird Acres.
Yes.
I've been up there yet.
Off Orchard Road.
Right, off Orchard Road, just for the record.
Chaplains, right? Chaplains, if you will. Okay, um, we have it here. It's been approved by DPW. Any one add any comments?
DPW's happy with it. I'm happy with it.
I agree.
Same.
Ditto.
Anything to say?
Nothing to say.
Sure you want to elaborate on that?
You have time for me to talk later.
I'll make a motion to approve the partial release of bond for Pondview in the amount specified by DPW.
I'll second.
Motion made and seconded. Any more further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
The next thing is a letter to Scott Parsons. If you might read it into the rec...
More than happy to.
If you remember, Scott Parsons is the gentleman that wanted to do the U-Haul retail at, uh, 51, 91 Industrial Drive.
91.
91. Um, at the, uh...
New self-storage.
Thank you.
I'd like to read into the record a letter to Scott Parsons, U-Haul Field Manager, 499 Montgomery Street, Chickapee, Mass. Regarding 91 Industrial Drive, East Long Meadow, self-storage. Dear Mr. Parsons, please be advised that the planning board reviewed your request to provide U-Haul vehicles for rent to be placed at the East Long Meadow self-storage facility located at the above referenced location. Straight retail use as you are seeking is not an allowed use in industrial garden district in East Long Meadow, other than as stated in the zoning bylaws as follows. 7.39 additional criteria for retail sales in industrial garden district. A, retail sales as a primary use are prohibited in the industrial garden district. B, inside incidental sale should not... Shall be allowed provided that they are related to the merchandise manufactured, that they are ancillary and secondary to the primary use to meet the following specifications. Number one, the allowed items are to be sold at the counter only. No one from public is allowed in the main part of the building. Number two, no more than 10% of the floor area of the business establishment shall be utilized for retail sales activities. In no event shall the area of the retail sales exceed 1,000 square feet. Number three, in the event a building is occupied by two or more businesses establishments, not more than 10% of the floor area of the individual business establishment shall be devoted to retail sales. In no event shall the area of retail exceed 1,000 square feet. Number four, an interior floor plan to scale must be submitted with a special permit application with the area to be devoted to sales clearly defined. Number five, a list of retail items to be sold shall be provided to and approved by the planning board along with a special permit application. As you can see, the use you are requesting does not meet any of the criteria for the following, any type of retail in this district. Please be advised that the use is allowed in the business, business and industrial districts in the town of East Long Meadow. If you have any questions, excuse me, please do not hesitate to contact the office at your convenience, very truly yours. Michael Carabatta, Chairman. Nice job, Mike.
All right, I believe you guys already heard this before he's been, before this. You guys already... I wasn't here for that meeting.
Yeah, you weren't here for that one.
Yeah, I was here when he...
Decided against it?
Yeah.
All right.
Didn't meet the criteria.
And he just requested that there was a letter stating such...
He probably needs to pass it on to people.
Yeah, he does.
Thank you.
Is there any agreement with this? I don't know when this really need a motion, but...
He had mentioned that, um, you know, Mayberry Handling allows retail, uh, rental... Let's put it, not retail, I'm sorry. Which they do, however, they...
It's different.
They make the equipment and they take the equipment and they deliver it compared to someone coming in. I mean, I could not go into Mayberry and rent one of those big vehicles and drive off with it. All right. And then he mentioned McGill Hose. And as you know, McGill Hose is allowed to do their specific area for retail, but it's all what they manufacture, so...
The retailer is tiny, too.
Right. Right. So...
That's a sign that's true.
Not that it's not a great idea. It's just not allowed.
I mean, some of those places will loan you a truck for free if you rent for a certain period of time. And that's incidental to the business. Okay, that's not a full U-Haul rental, which is a separate business entirely.
Right.
Okay.
So, um, and the only thing left, it was the budget presentation. I had explained to George before the meeting started. I have not had an opportunity to meet with the accountant because the selectmen's departments were due for their budget this week, so I'm meeting with her next week. I would like to have you reschedule. I know that most of you have said that you're looking to cancel December 30th. What I'd like to do is schedule a meeting in between strictly for budget purposes so that you can see exactly what we're doing with the budget.
Before the 30th?
Yes. No, no, after the 30th. Between the 30th and the next meeting, yeah.
Okay.
So...
Maybe during the day or in the afternoon or something if we're just...
Whenever is good for you.
All right, why don't we get through the holidays and see what everybody's schedule looks like?
Mine's open.
I'll make it work.
I can make it work as long as there's no still.
We need to post it in advance.
I was gonna say, so, you know, the week of January 12th? 12, 13, 14, whatever's good for you.
I can make it work.
The only problem with the six is can we get a room?
With the what?
A room. Um, because the selectmen might be meeting on the sixth.
We'll find someplace.
Okay.
We can meet at my house.
I'd love to have you guys. Ralph's been over.
Yeah, because it's only gonna be for that?
Oh, yeah, yeah.
Yeah, it'll strictly be just for budget, you know, discussions, because...
I'm afraid to go over on the record.
But it's still an open meeting.
Oh, absolutely.
If they want to show up, they can.
Yeah. Yeah. They can show up at your house.
Love to have them.
They can show up at my house.
So you want January 6th of that we're talking about?
No, the following week.
January 13th?
Wait a minute, no.
No, it would be the sixth.
The fifth, yeah, the sixth, I'm sorry.
It would be the sixth.
The week of the sixth, yeah.
It'll take very long.
And that's, that's cool by me, the sixth.
That's good with me.
The sixth?
Yeah. Two states I keep open.
I'm gonna use George's terminology. That's cool by me, too.
All right, what time is good for all of you?
Six o'clock.
Six o'clock.
Six o'clock? And where do you want to have it?
Wherever we can. We'll kind of...
All right, let me, let me find out where we can have it. All right.
If the selectmen are having a meeting at here, we could take over their room.
That's true.
I'm sorry?
The selectmen are meeting at here and it's just gonna be us. We could use their conference room. Okay? If they would let us.
You can use the senior center, too.
Or the senior center.
All right. So the sixth, six o'clock, if you, if you can just, um, mark your calendar for that.
Yeah, we could even do the library if necessary.
That's true, too. There's a couple of rooms over there.
If it's available.
Okay. All right, so we'll talk about the employee contract discussion then, too? Do you want to do that tonight? Do everything then? Okay.
Yes, because I'm still waiting for information from the accounting department with regard to that regrade position.
So the possible executive session has been...
That's gone.
Postponed.
So, um, the, uh, you need to vote on canceling December 30th?
Now, is the 30th... Oh, no, that's not New Year's Eve. Is it day before New Year's Eve?
Day before New Year's Eve.
Yeah, I don't... For argument's sake, I would say yes to cancel. If something pressing came up, then that...
I haven't received anything.
I don't want to prohibit anybody...
You don't have anything, so why even bother?
Pardon?
You don't have anything.
No.
I think the only thing like Michael said is if something comes up...
Yeah, we can open it up.
Yeah, I don't want to prohibit somebody from getting going if, you know...
We only need three of us anyways.
Something comes out of crunch time.
All right, so if I hear anything... But you're basically going to cancel.
Correct.
Unless there's something...
I'll make a motion to cancel.
All right.
December 30th.
Boy, there is no delay in that motion. This is the fastest motion I've ever seen.
George, you second it?
I second.
Yeah, a motion made and seconded. Again, if something, you know, important comes up and somebody needs to get in, then well, certainly.
No, I have something for the 13th, but, um, not for that.
Motion made and seconded. All those in favor?
Aye.
What about the HR position?
HR?
Yes, um, at the department heads' meeting last week, it was requested that I talk to the board to find out your feelings as to whether or not an HR position should be acquired for the town of East Long Meadow.
Uh, we did have one at one point in time.
We had one, um...
I know it went to town hall to get a full-time one and that was denied. That was not accepted, not acceptable to the taxpayers.
Yeah, because the salary kept increasing every year. Um, there was two, three years and the salary just kept going up. Unfortunately, the, um... The documentation that we received from that position at the time was less than acceptable.
I just, I remember we had an HR person and there were a lot of issues and a lot of them did not get resolved.
Yeah, we, we never did receive what we, what the town paid.
Let me ask you something. If any, I mean...
It's difficult for me to...
I think it was part-time.
Contractual, or, I mean...
It would be a full-time position for the town now and forevermore.
Do we, do we really have enough work for an HR person full-time? I can't imagine we do.
We...
But if, but if I'm wrong, tell me.
I think you're wrong.
I think you're wrong, because we're... The town budget is, what, 40 million?
Fifty.
Fifty.
Fifty plus.
Fifty-seven, fifty-two million. Half of that's the school budget. So you're running a $25 million a year business.
I'm not sure whether or not the HR person would be part of the school.
No, but even without the schools, okay, you're running a $25 million a year business with quite a few employees. I mean, if you think about DPW and all the town hall and the library, everything else, you don't have an HR person? Yeah, and we got unions, a union here?
Well, that's my biggest problem, is as department heads, we are, we are required to enforce the...
Contract.
Contracts as the unions are. It's subjective, department to department. What portions of the union contracts are enforced and which are not. And it causes dissension between the union employees because it should not be subjective. I mean, the union contracts are the union contracts, and we should...
Not only that, the department heads are pretty much experts in their department.
We try to be.
They're not experts in union contracts, in discipline, in all those other things that go on that HR helps take care of in hiring, in legal hiring procedures, you know, all that kind of stuff. If you have somebody who understands mass municipal law, you're in much better shape and you lay yourself, you're much less likely to lay yourself open to a lawsuit, okay? Whereas if you're relying on a department head who may not be as well-informed on mass municipal law, and they either say something or make a hiring decision that can't be defended, you know, you can have a discrimination lawsuit at the drop of a hat.
Of course, the Board of Selectmen are the ones that do the union contracts too, so...
Yeah, so I, you know, I just, it's scary to me that we don't have somebody in charge of HR. Not that that person would take anything away from the department heads in their ability to run their departments, but having that expertise to advise them and to, you know, make sure the paperwork is current and that all the stuff on the boards is, you know, this year is not ten years ago.
If we get...
All that stuff.
And I agree with you, if we get someone who has the credentials that are required for an actual HR person.
Exactly.
Not someone that is, that just wants to be an HR person. There's a lot of federal laws, there's a lot of, you know, state laws that are involved in compensation and benefits, and that has to be, the job description, I think, has to be really, really seriously looked at if that's the way the board wants to do it. But that's what I've been asked, whether or not the planning board as a board is...
I would support...
Behind it, so that we can do a letter to support the position.
I would think that a recommendation of mine would be that the executive boards, okay, particularly DPW, which has one of the largest workforces in town, the library, which has their own culture, planning board, all be involved in the hiring decision, that we not abdicate it to the Board of Selectmen. Okay, and that we're looking for an experienced municipal HR person. We're not looking for somebody who needs a job, we're looking for, you know, somebody who knows how to do this and is a professional and has the credentials and the experience to walk in here and set up...
We need someone with a master's.
With what?
With a master's.
Well, I would have to research what the criteria would be, okay? But I would think that, you know, that person's gonna be setting up a whole new department, and that's not an easy thing to do. And we will have to get it past town meeting.
Oh, definitely, it's just they're looking for support from the individual boards and, I don't know, I don't know how you feel about it.
George, you're doing a good job of convincing me. However, what my concern is, is it really, is it really a forty-hour-a-week job? Maybe it is, I don't know if it is or not, but if it's not, I'd like the person to be busy doing other things instead of sitting on their hands waiting for an HR issue to come up.
I agree with that.
But however, though, I'm starting to understand where you're coming from on this.
Alright, Sandra, you got any?
I tend to agree with both George and Ty. I mean, I don't know if it is a forty-hour-a-week position, but as of now, maybe in the first six months, setting up, maybe yes. There's probably a lot of work, but I think eventually it'll probably dwindle.
I'd like the person to be flexible so that if they're not busy forty hours a week, they'd be willing to, you know, help out in other areas.
Correct, correct. I tend to agree. I would definitely say, at least in my opinion, we need some, an HR person. We absolutely need someone that would be flexible. If it's not a forty-hour-a-week position and you're hired full-time, like you said, you don't want them sitting around, but I think that goes under job description and what they're gonna be required to do. I mean, that's, that's where you handle that. But in my opinion, we definitely need someone.
Right, in my opinion, we traveled down this road before we had somebody, we got rid of them because they couldn't allocate the money, we're constantly being asked to tighten up our budgets, there's no new monies for anything, anybody, any raises, and now we're looking to add another sixty, seventy thousand dollar position. Personally, I don't see where the money's gonna come from. I do think it's a good idea, it's already been voted on at town meeting. We had somebody who didn't fulfill the needs we're looking to fulfill, so I personally can't support it only because of the past track record that has, you know, presented itself. So I would not be in favor of an HR person for those reasons.
Can I...
Absolutely.
Listening to George's point, George is really saying that you need someone who's really up to speed at a high level on HR stuff. Listening to your point goes back to what I said earlier, which is, yeah, you need an expert, but at the same token, you don't want to waste sixty thousand dollars if the person's only working twenty hours a week on HR-type stuff. So I want to emphasize the fact that the person needs to be flexible to do other things other than HR, but they need to be an HR expert.
Agreed.
Alright, so are they looking for an agreement or...
Basically a letter of recommendation, a letter just basically stating how the planning board as a board feels. And I think that I have it. The one thing is, a true HR person, their education is a master's. People that actually do this type of work, they have a master's degree in compensation and benefits. You are not ever going to, and I mean, I'm not for or against, I'm not trying to sway you, but you will never get a true HR person that has that kind of a degree that's going to agree to be flexible and do...
Work for a minimum amount of money.
Other, exactly, other jobs.
How do other towns deal with this situation?
I haven't had the opportunity to check it, I can, I can...
I can guess, I can ask, case by case.
Find out for you, whether they have that type of a position?
How they do their, because it's almost the same size, you know, money-wise, pretty close.
I can, I can check around and find out who has, you know, actual positions for an HR position.
Do you want to answer tonight, or do you want to table the discussion?
You can table it.
My thought, Robin, would be if you get someone with a master's degree in HR and all, they've been in the workforce long enough, they're not gonna want to just sit there and twiddle their thumbs.
That's true, but they're also not gonna want to do something beneath them.
Yeah, it's not necessarily beneath them, it's, you know what? The setting up of the department, running through everything, getting everything organized for a town that hasn't had an HR, I mean, you're talking a lot of work. I don't think we even have to...
Initially, yeah.
Right, that's my concern, I mean, initial, maybe what, how long, take the person, five, six, month, a year? After that, once everything's set up, I mean, it's gonna be pretty small.
Yeah, take much, just get acumen with the personnel. So you want to, you want to table discussion, you want to vote on a letter, vote on a letter of recommendation tonight?
I can look if you want.
I'd suggest we table it and get more information.
I'd like to see what other towns do, and what they maybe say per se pay these people, what their hourlies are and things like that, I mean, how they work and...
When did they want a decision from us?
Yesterday.
Well then, if we table it, we're just putting it off.
Yeah, but, you know, I would prefer to have it be an honest...
Well, we don't have to vote on a letter, do we?
Well...
No, it's just...
There's no specific votes, but you can get...
It would be before, let's put it this way, it would be, the recommendation would be needed before the budget goes into effect, so I'd say January thirteenth. So if we're gonna have a meeting between now and, yeah, and that, when our budget is due, that would be the time to discuss it, so we, I should be able to find out that information before then.
I mean, my problem is, I come to this with a handicap, I worked in industry, okay, where things are done differently than they are.
Me too, it's very difficult, it's...
Ditto, not industry, but ditto.
The corporate is very different.
But I'm almost certain that there's no money in this year's budget for it, it would have to be...
It would be for sixteen, right.
It's gonna take a year to put together a job description and get agreement between the different departments, the different executive boards, as to what they're actually looking at.
It should, let's put it that way, it should, yeah.
None who write the descriptions.
So it's not gonna hit spring town meeting.
They're looking for that, though.
You know, my other feeling, I understand Mike's point about the cost, but I think if it were done right, it could actually save the town money, okay? That that person could save the town more than their salary. If they couldn't, I wouldn't hire them. But, you know, the thing is, by regularizing discipline and enforcement of union contracts, by advising the people who are negotiating union contracts, you know, this could actually save the town some money.
Well, that's, they would have to advise the Board of Selectmen, because the Board of Selectmen is the only negotiating unit for all, actually, I don't think, I know police, fire, town employees, I don't think they do DPW's workers.
And they certainly don't do the schools.
No.
No, but my point is that if they had professional advice, then, you know, it might put them in a much better position negotiating, depending if they wanted to be in a better position negotiating.
Right.
Just, yeah, anyway, what is worth it.
Full table for now, and I'll do it.
And then I'll find out so that when we have the meeting in January, I'll hopefully have...
I'd be interested to, the HR position, except for the entire town? Or are we taking out the schools?
Oh, you'd definitely take out the schools, definitely. Schools deal with their own.
As we all do now. Hence...
Does the school already have an HR person?
That I don't know, I can find out, but chances are, yes.
And that's why I would be saying if this is a town HR person...
Yeah, I'm sure they do with all the...
I'm sure the schools do, because the...
Most people say they're sure the town of East Long Meadow...
Let's find out.
But the Board of Selectmen does not negotiate the schools' contracts, so it's all school department. I can, I can check for you.
Definitely. Let's just take a look in the town report, and you'll see who works for the school department, what their titles are.
Several hundred employees, I'm sure.
Yeah, well, the town is several hundred employees, between police, fire, DPW... You know, and then everything in town hall, and rec department, council on aging, you know, there's a lot of people that work for this town.
I believe it's over eight hundred total.
Yeah, it's always more than you realize.
That's a lot of people to run with no HR, formal HR experience, I mean, that's...
Yeah, and we all fall into the same umbrella, and yet the umbrella's got many parts and pieces.
Right, yeah.
Which makes it a very unique situation, unlike corporate America.
Yeah.
Where everybody answers to the one in general.
And what they're basically looking for is, you know, policy issues, we have, we have none. Our hopes were for the last position that was here, that we would have the policy handbooks. That never came to fruition, so when you come to work for the town, well, when I came to work for the town seventeen years ago, I was green. I came from the legal field, I didn't have anything given to me, there was no employee handbook, there was no, you know, rules and regs for, you know, no dress code, no holidays, no, nothing.
The whole situation with rec trying to hire an assistant over the summer, okay? You know, a competent HR person would hopefully have steered that into the correct procedure rather than letting it degenerate, okay?
Well, and see, this is if the department's all, you know, for example, the planning board, that this board has always allowed me the freedom to hire and fire anyone in my department because I know how they work, how they don't work. Half of us have that, I don't want to say luxury, but have that...
Well, most boards do.
But that also puts you...
Right, yes, I do.
That also puts you at risk.
But you're an elected board, so...
But that also puts you at risk.
Oh, absolutely.
Because if you don't follow all the anti-discrimination laws and everything else...
Absolutely, and I'm bonded, so...
You know...
For that specific reason.
So it's important that you have the right advice, if, you know, a person who's very knowledgeable you can go to, because this stuff changes all the time.
But I mean, look at, look at what's going on in the clerk's office for a part-time position. Nineteen hours.
It was filled, though.
No, not yet.
Oh, I thought it was filled.
Well, it was and then it wasn't.
That's not...
So it's issues, but I mean, it's issues like that, that an HR person could or could not hopefully take care of, I mean, it's up to you, I'm just looking to basically, you know...
See what other towns do, and then we'll...
Alright, what I can do is get you that information for the sixth, okay?
That would be great.
Perfect.
Minutes?
We got a bunch of them today.
Well, that's because Mr. Page is...
I gave you my comments of the seventh and twenty-first.
Made changes, so, let me see, October seventh.
Do I have a motion to approve minutes of October seventh?
Second.
Alls in favor?
Aye.
October twenty-first.
Do I have a motion to approve minutes of October twenty-first?
Don't move. Second.
Any more discussion?
Aye.
Finally, November eighteenth.
I have not reviewed the November eighteenth yet.
Okay, so we're gonna...
Anybody to do that?
I did.
So you have your comments?
Yes, my comments are in. You want to...
Michael hasn't looked at them yet, have you looked at them?
Not today's, and not the last meetings. If I wasn't here at the last meeting, the one before that, I didn't look at it. The November meeting I did not look at, that's what I'm trying to say.
We'll put that off for the next meeting.
Yeah, do you want to put it off, or you want to come? I know I've got Ralph's comments, which I do, I feel pretty comfortable.
Alright, so November eighteenth.
Do I have a motion to approve?
Don't move. Second.
Alls in favor?
Aye. Thanks, Ralph.
Do I have a motion to adjourn?
Don't move. Second.
Alls in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.